...job, so let's keep the staff big round of applause. With that, I'd like to start, get right into it and start with our first presenter, who's Keith Vaughn, who is from the New York State Council on Children and Families.
Good morning. Thank you for the invitation. I'm from the Council on Children and Families, and we have had a 40-year history in state government, serving as a vehicle for coordination of health, education, and human services that impact children in New York State. In 19... I'm sorry, in 2017, the Annie Casey Foundation invited the council to be part of their census preparation initiative headed by philanthropic foundations that included the Casey Foundation, as well as the board and the family. Thank you so much. You guys are awesome. The council was invited because we are the New York State grantee for the Annie Casey Foundation as a kids' count entity. And once on board, we began asking our New York State partners to become aware and educated about the census and all of the challenges therein. This inter-agency approach of the 11 state agencies that serve children and families is a broad network of advocacy and nonprofit organizations also, all looking out for children and families in New York State. It makes for a unique and well-positioned partner to assist with the census preparation. We're very fortunate that in the first year of our partnership, we received a small grant from the Annie Casey Foundation. You have heard from many of the people funded by this philanthropic leadership at the national level. This partnership has led to excellent connections with census experts. You've heard them on areas where low responses could be funded, what entails a good census enumeration, and all of the funding issues at the national level. They are all funded by this philanthropic group at the national level. So given what we learned about the census, our primary focus was the local update of census addresses, or LUCA. Many people think of door-to-door surveys when they hear about the census, when they hear about these national surveys, but really, the address opportunity is where it all begins and where we need the best information about New York. And so we knew that an accurate count would require the municipalities in New York to step up and to do this tedious work, where it's actually remarkably time-consuming to check addresses and the technical nature of the LUCA process. So we recognized and greatly appreciated the fact that those participating in LUCA would be undertaking a very time-consuming and significant task for New York State. So we wanted to use three messages in our work who might participate in LUCA. That it is important to your community. We had messages about what the census is. You've heard a lot of that, I'm sure, and many in the audience will know this. I'm not going to money that is affected by the census count that comes into their community. So that was always an interesting conversation. And third, let us help you support your community. We hosted 20 webinars with the former New York State chief demographer, Cornell, the Census Regional Office and the State Data Center members, Dale Miller, from Your Neck of the Woods in Oneida, and Herkimer Counties was a valuable resource, and he was willing to share that. So we definitely give a shout out to Dale. We were also connecting and collaborating with the New York State Association of Counties and towns and mayors, and we offered them lots of our infographics, which the commission members have in their packets. And I put a small number up on the computer. You can see our first GIF, perhaps in state government, but probably not. It's a New York-themed GIF. Are you signed up for LUCA? We also had complete-count community census forums around the state. We partnered with our New York State Engagement Table, and we did lots of forums throughout New York State, meeting the community members who had been interested in perhaps elections or town government or their library process, and brought them together. We paired them with our child and family connections in the community, and we let them know about LUCA and how they might be helpful to what was going on in their county, and also asked them to ask their county about what they were doing and what help they might need to start that conversation between communities and government about the census. Our association with the Kids' Count Network makes us especially sensitive to the undercount of children, and we wanted to learn more from parents of young children about what they thought might encourage them to answer the census, and also who should carry that message, and where good placement of this message might be. So we conducted focus groups all over the state, looking at getting those feedback, those comments from parents. And what we learned is that parents were unaware, surprised, and pleased to learn that the census count impacted their communities. We do have a strong connection with Head Start in New York State, and we did go to several Head Starts, and so the census numbers impact the Head Start funding across the country. They were unaware of how the census was linked to redistricting and congressional seats, but felt that the funding was the critical message for community members and what was going to happen in their community. And they reminded us that the messaging needs to be constant and over a long term to cut through all of the stress and hectic nature of their daily lives. And the messengers needed to be one of us, the parents said. They wanted to say that it was nothing personal to the two women from the government in the room, but that they really wanted to hear from peers and other people in their community that this was important and that this was going to impact their community. And they wanted to see good roads, snow removal, all of those things, but they definitely had concerns with their past experience with government also. So it definitely was a seesaw conversation about some of the other interactions they have had with government in their community. The next phase of census preparation entails building an infrastructure within New York State community that's able to conduct outreach activities that engage and motivate members to complete the census once it begins. And of course, state government, local government will be keys to that success, and we are incredibly invested in the outcome of Census 2020. Philanthropic organizations are a critical partner, and they are here in New York State as well as the national group that I mentioned. And they are networking and outreach to our communities and to our nonprofit groups. This is a two-step process. Providers and individuals who serve on community complete-count committees need to be reminded about the financial cost of an inaccurate census and what can be gained from a complete count. To assist with this, we've developed fact sheets for each New York State county that describe the well-being of children in that county and the federal funding that counties receive based on the census counts. The commissioners have some in their file. I also have Oneida County flyers with me today. Community leaders, advocates, service providers need to use this knowledge to remind parents and others that the census is used to fund programs used by many of those who may be reluctant to respond to the census. And we need to carry the message that the census employees are using, that it's safe, easy, and important to use and to answer the census. So we will need, in New York State, deliberate, ongoing, well-targeted messaging. In the packets for the commissioners, I've included magnets. You can keep one. You can share one. I also brought more magnets with me. They say, be sure to count every child in New York State. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I'd like to just welcome Commissioner Lauren Moore, who is from the... many hats from the Library Association and other things, gives many titles that I'm not going to give, but the welcome question is very...
I wondered if you, since you have all the data on the children and families, I wondered if you would comment on what efforts are being made to reach the children in foster care? Oh, great question. When we were talking with the Office of Child and Family Services staff, who are members of the council and we network with in different kinds of meetings, they were wondering if they could send out a Dear Foster Parent letter and what would that include from the census. And so we are working with them to provide a message that foster care parents should absolutely indeed include the children living with them on April 1st, 2020, on their census form. And so hopefully, that will allay lots of fears and confusion as well. We also have a strong connection to the kinship navigator and guardian network, and we will be also educating them about the forms and who should kinship guardians put on their form. And they should put every child living with them on April 1st, 2020.
Questions from the commissioners?
Yes.
In terms of at-risk populations, I know that varies across the state in terms of where you are, what at, how you define that risk. And I don't want to get into a sociological conversation, but briefly what that looks like and what are some of the things we could do better to reach those populations that are generally historically undercounted?
Right. And I think that's also an excellent question and sort of the question of the year for 2019, is how do we reach out to all of these folks who may not want to answer the census or who may be protecting someone? There's lots of reasons why children are not counted, and there's a handout in the commissioner's packet. It's on our website at the council. The census has done their own research, and there have been other research to show the reasons why children are missed, and they are because they are in foster parents, they are in intergenerational homes, where the parents, the grandparents are super sure that everybody's going to move out in three months, so they're not going to put them on the form because they're not going to be here for very long, and it may or may not work out that way. Families move often, low-income families, and that has a certain ability for you to get your mail on a regular basis. So there are lots of reasons why children are not counted. Many families don't want to tell the landlord that their brother is staying with them on his way out of prison to re-enter the community, and it won't be for long, but it's against the lease. So there's lots of reasons for not speaking out, and of course, the census is trying to send the message that it's safe, easy, and important. So certainly, those folks who have multiple members that are not on the lease, living with them, that is something the Census Bureau will not share with their landlord, will not share with their city government, will not share with their state government. That is a message that very few people believe, for sure. But I think the more we have people in the community who are from the community, who we are able to have a good relationship with, who the nonprofits have a good relationship with, who perhaps the philanthropic institutions are funding in our communities to do some of this discussion, community education that can help, hopefully, in New York to counter some of the fear and misinformation that's out there.
Thanks. Any questions? I have a question. You noted in your slide about 43% of children under the 5 or under are at risk. Is that driven largely by, in some of your material, you have five categories: large households, communities with high poverty, families that frequently move, live in rental houses, multi-generational households with low response. Is that what drives the 43%?
Yes. And there's an odd phenomena that Mary and I found when we did the focus groups, that parents will put their teenagers on the form, but they won't put their infant on the form. And they told us that boldly.
Why is that?
We tried to dig a little deeper, and there was some rational and some irrational answers to that question.
Can you give us the rational? Andy, your rational.
Well, one parent was very concerned that her infant son would be drafted if she put him on the census form. And another woman was very concerned that her household information would be put on ancestry.com if she answered the census form. And some people were tired. They said, you know, I remember filling out the long form. So they were older, perhaps, grandparents or aunties who were taking care of grandchildren. And so that was one of the reasons that they didn't want to fill out the form. They'll take care of the child, but it's my niece's child. It's my son's child. So there's a degree to which they have a line about what they'll take responsibility for or what they want the parent to take responsibility for.
Is there, as a follow-up today, did you do focus groups specifically on foreign-born families where they may have children? The citizen questions, one that we've heard. I mean, it's in the news. We're hearing about it everywhere. It's a pretty important point. But is that driving the potential of not having some families respond that they have children for fears of deportation or other issues?
Right. We did a migrant seasonal worker parent focus group before March 30th, 2018, when the citizen question was announced. And they were very, very invested in their children. And what was good for their children, they would do. They would listen to the teachers in their program, and they were going to fill out the census form as of February 2018. Since then, we've done groups that have brought up the issue of mixed-status families and the fact that they would not answer the census. There's also a lot of discussion in the focus groups about not answering that question but filling out the form. So I don't think people have really figured it out, but I do think there's a huge amount of fear in New York State and in communities that have mixed-status families.
What are the best vehicles to deliver messages to families with children under the ages of five? Is it newly, if they're a multi-child family, once in school? Is it through schools, what programs, what is the way to maximize response rates, and where do you message that could be useful, and what can you present to people who are all in, say, you want to focus on this, or provide funding for this?
Right. So if we're looking for children zero to five, we could start with all the pregnant women today who will have babies in 2020 to be counted. And we can start with all of the early childhood professionals that talk with and speak with families who have children, newborn to five. The libraries have huge youth services components, Toddler and Me, Literacy Circles, and all of that. I know they're a wonderful partner in the early childhood community. Teachers, Head Starts, all of the community groups, the family home daycares, all of those folks are potentially trusted messengers for parents with young children. There's also a lot of information in the world on radio and TV, so I love the idea of a TV show incorporating the census as a theme. And I know that Telemundo has done that with some of their TV shows. And I think that would be a great idea to reach families that have young children where it's talked about.
You worked with doctors. I mean, doctors, obviously, if you talk about pregnant women, is a natural place for follow-up and checking for kids, like PA actions.
Lots of waiting time.
Right. Well, there's multiple groups waiting, but we're not going to talk about that here. But is that a partnership potentially that's been untapped, or have we tapped into those types of partnerships where it's a natural, trusted source? It's your physician, it's your child's caretaker of health issues. Do we have programs through Disney and other things, and other associations where we can maximize some of that messaging to make sure families are comfortable with the message itself?
Right. I think doctors are certainly a trusted messenger most times, and I think that they are a partnership for other options, like a vaccine campaign and things that early literacy, reading, singing to your child from birth. I don't know that it's been tapped for the census in the past decennial censuses.
Any other questions?
Sure. Thanks. In any of your work, have you talked about the digital element of census and how families feel, will that change their response rates, will they get easier or harder?
Awesome. Yes, definitely. Everyone who was a parent of a young child, so probably in their twenties, would have said that they were going to answer it on their phone, but said that their parents wouldn't, most likely. They remember the idea of someone coming to their house, going door-to-door. People did not know that you couldn't answer it on the phone before and that you might be able to do that today. There are lots of notices about scams from AARP about the phone. So then there were a whole bunch of folks who said, no, my mother would never do that over the phone. AARP told her not to. And so there were some ideas about having the forms at a library or a community center, a senior care day program, where seniors could come and fill out their form, maybe with some help, and it would be a paper form like it has been in the past for them.
Is there a timing issue? A follow-up on Ms. Moore's piece, then. Messaging is always a difficult thing. It's like in elections, people don't often pay attention to elections and ask for people who are in the election business, like the general public doesn't pay attention to it like before an election. Do we have a similar problem here where it's never really the message, or people really aren't paying attention to what they're hearing isn't resonating? We should wait or time it differently? Do you have any thoughts on how we should do messaging and the timing of the messaging, given the census date is people first of next year?
Right. Well, the parents told us that they needed to be told this over and over again. They needed to be told it's important. They needed to be told it impacts their community. And they needed to be told to put all of their children on the form, and they needed to be told that over and over again. And then in April, they need to be told, fill out the form, complete the form. So I think, from what we've heard, it's never too early, and there's never too much census.
Great. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
...and certainly some of the approaches that certainly we heard from the folks that we not only surveyed, but we also conducted a couple of focus groups, so we were able to really speak to that, not only at the national level, but certainly with the focus groups. We really did two specific regions. Before I go into that, I want to quickly say that Naleo Educational Fund is the leading nonprofit organization, 401(c)(3) organization, that really facilitates the participation of Latinos in the whole political process, from citizenship to public service. We do that generally through three different strategies. We do that through our PR, our policy, research, and advocacy department. We do that through our constituency services and also through our civic engagement. And a lot of civic engagement work is really working with the community directly. We do that through our workshops, workshops in helping people through the naturalization process. We also do direct civic engagement or more traditional get-out-the-vote campaigns. And then certainly, we also do some voter registration. And then finally, of course, our more important piece and what I'll be testifying today is around the census. And certainly, that's going to be key for us moving forward from now until the actual census count in April.
Can you tell us what the acronym is?
Yes. It's the National Association of Latino and appointed official. Great. No, thank you. Okay, as I mentioned, Naleo Educational Fund, the National Association of Latino elected and appointed officials, educational fund, again, a nonprofit organization. And again, major strategies, our policy, research, and advocacy, constituency services, and civic engagement. In terms of our census work, we'll be doing a national effort or a national campaign led by and developed by Naleo Educational Fund, Agasay Kontal. And then we also have a sub-campaign, Asme Kontal, which will be an ages zero to five campaign focused exclusively on achieving a full count for very young Latino children. And I'll go into a little bit more in terms of the numbers, and I won't go too deeply into them, but it really speaks to, you know, the work that we have ahead of us in terms of making sure that there's a complete count in all ages, certainly. Both campaigns will focus on regions with significant hard account, Latino communities. We certainly have colleagues that are in different regions, but we'll also be working with other partners across the country to be able to ensure that we're providing them not only train the trainers, briefings, for example, as things sort of develop and change, campaign materials, digital and traditional media efforts as well. One of the key things that we've been doing, and we certainly did this in 2010, is that we have a bilingual information and referral hotline that, you know, anybody from the community can actually call if they have any questions, as the census gets closer, certainly since it is live now. But also, as the count actually happens, they can begin to call that number and have any questions. We can certainly answer those. The other thing is our informational website that is also bilingual. It will be in Spanish and English, and that launched on April 1st, 2019, this year. I just quickly want to give you sort of a context, and I think we've seen these numbers, at least in different sort of aspects and in different places as well. One of the reasons why I wanted to put this up here is because we know that federal funds are really census-guided. So it's really, we would be remiss not to ensure that there's a complete count, not only in New York State, but across the country as well. As I mentioned, in terms of the undercount of very young children, we did a study, it almost feels like a very long time, it was a couple of years ago now, where what we estimated is that the census in 2010, 1 million very young children were undercounted. And in 2010, net undercount for very young Latino children was 7.1% compared to 4.3% for non-Latinos. So certainly, there's a lot of work to make sure that this net undercount rate, you know, certainly goes down and hopefully to zero. Just to give you a little bit more perspective in terms of the few states that have the largest number of net undercount, and certainly, New York is in the top six, and it also makes up about 78%, all these states make up 78% of the total net undercount of Latino children in the country. It's a substantial number. Here's just another quick look, looking at county, and certainly, Kings, New York County is one of them in terms of net undercount in terms of the estimate. So how, why is it then that very young children are undercounted? And I think there was some mentioned in the previous testimony, but really, this idea of not realizing that you have to include children in the census, which is something that has come out not only in our research, but other research as well, and then also that reluctance to respond to the census and include your children. And I think that's going to be key, and I'll speak to that a little bit later as I'm going into some of the numbers from not only our survey, but also our focus groups as well. There's a real reluctance to be able to include not only young children, certainly, but everybody in the family and certainly in the household. We did a couple of different things in terms of our research. One of the things that we ended up doing is we ended up doing an assessment in Rhode Island, and specifically in Providence County residents. This is right when the end-to-end test that the census conducted there earlier last year or mid-last year. And specifically, what we were looking at is really trying to assess how people were engaging in an actual test with the census. And unfortunately, the ETE did not include the citizenship question, so a lot of the way that people were actually responding to it was really informed by that. But we still asked that in our survey. And what we found is that survey respondents, not only elected officials, but also community leaders, agree that the citizenship question will depress participation in the Census 2020. agree that the citizenship question will depress participation in the census 2020. Another thing that we found is that Latinos generally prefer to participate in the ETE by mail or in person, particularly salient because what we heard from the GAO, that there were some serious concerns about the Bureau's in-person follow-up operations during the ETE. And I think we've heard some anecdotal evidence as well that, and I think this was the ACS, the American Community Survey, when one of the surveyors sat down and was talking to somebody about specifically filling out this information. And once the citizenship question came up, they got up and left. They didn't want to complete the survey, they didn't want to continue. So this is all sort of playing into this in terms of another layer that certainly can be added, if the citizenship question is added certainly, but other factors as well, of how people are going to respond. Spanish language accessibility, and I'll reach our imperative, and I'll go into some of the numbers from our other research that are going to be highly important as we start thinking about how to outreach to the Latino community as a whole, but certainly being mindful of Spanish language accessibility as well. Our other research that we conducted is we conducted two things, as I mentioned previously. First, there's our national poll, and that was conducted last year between April 11th and the 20th. And then also four focus groups, two in Charlotte, North Carolina, and then two in the Rio Grande Valley in Texas. The reason why we wanted to include those two is, one, because I think we really wanted to complement the survey. And more specifically, really looking at not only border Latino communities and being able to really speak to how they were thinking about the census and how they might engage with the census and what messages might work, but also, at least in Charlotte, North Carolina, is really looking at immigrant population of Latinos. And certainly we had a very diverse group of Latinos that participated in our focus groups. So what did we find? So I think generally, and I think this is something that's very positive, is that generally Latinos had a positive view of the census. There wasn't anything really negative that stood out in terms of the actual census. However, when they saw the version of the actual questionnaire, especially when they saw that they had to answer a question about citizenship, there was a hesitation, there was fear, there was lack of confidence. And I think the Spanish word that came up in one of our focus groups is desconfianza, which is a lack of confidence in that process. Survey respondents overwhelmingly expressed a preference to fill out the census on paper form. This is particularly important considering the fact that there's going to be a big effort to do the census online, certainly. That's something that's definitely new in 2020. In terms of messages that worked best in terms of participation, we were able to test a few messages, and one of them that really resonated with, at least with those that responded to our survey, is that it's convenient, safe, and it's required. And if we, and one of the assumptions here is the fact that if we're normalizing it right, we're making, we're letting people know that it's convenient, you know, you can answer it online, you can fill it out, you can mail it back. It's safe, you know, your information is going to be picked up private and so forth, and it's required by law and so forth. People seem to really resonate with that. Our focus groups, however, while the convenience, safety, and required message was also very, resonated well, the providing funding for local schools and community programs was also effective. And one of the reasons, and one of the things that we're assuming here is that once you localize it and once you begin to talk about it within the perspective of, this is really going to help your schools, this is really going to help your hospitals, this is really going to help everything that's local to you and that matters not only to yourself, but also to your kids and your family and your community as a whole. And I think that's where we're seeing some of that as well. And so not surprisingly then, family members were the most trusted messengers. And as you know, I previously heard that with the previous testimony, certainly that's very important. Nurses, doctors, and healthcare providers are also highly trusted messengers. And one of the things that we heard in our focus group is those who speak for the children. So schools, for example, teachers, were highly, highly trusted and are very convincing when we're delivering a message. So again, it goes back to this idea of community, certainly, but being able to trust those that you have a contact with and are engaged with, not only long-term, but also have a meaningful communication with, right? Certainly family members fall under that. Here are just some subgroup differences of note on our survey. Immigrants were especially responsive to the convenience, safety, and required message, with 75% saying they would definitely participate in response to the message. And again, this goes back to the idea of trying to ease some of those anxieties that really exist among the different subgroups of Latinos in the Latino community as a whole. And again, it's consistent with the serious privacy concerns voiced in the study. Women were most responsive to the civic and community duty message, with 57% saying they would definitely participate in response to the message. And Latinos under age 40 were more responsive to a resistance message. And, you know, I think it sort of speaks for itself, right? I mean, I think under 40 certainly are younger folks that are thinking about the census in probably a slightly different way. And certainly, having different messages that resonate across the board can potentially be very useful. For example, the response to the convenience, safety, and required, overall, we know that that is very, very useful. But when we're looking at more specific subgroups, certainly some of these other messages can be very effective and can be very helpful as you're beginning to do a lot more targeted outreach, certainly, and getting people to fill out the census. And as I mentioned, and I think this is almost very straightforward, right? For Spanish speakers, Spanish language media, we're trusted sources of information, not surprisingly. Younger participants had more favorable views of social media, not surprisingly either, considering all the research that's out there to suggest this. 85% of survey participants were regularly online, excuse me, via smartphones. And I think this is really important, it's very consistent with other research out there as well, is that Latinos are really driving not only the social media aspect of getting information, but also how they get that information. Most Latinos are going to be online through their mobile phones, their smartphones, not through their computer, not through a connected line to the internet, really through their phones. And that's how they're getting not only their information, but also how they're accessing the internet. And then this is key too, in terms of how Latinos are really engaging with information. Survey participants frequently search online to get more information or to verify information. This is something really interesting that we heard in our focus groups, where the participants would see something on Facebook, for example, and then see that it was some news or something, some piece of information. What they would do then is they would do a search to verify that that is true or not. Now, we know that when you do a search, they could be problematic as well. So I think one of the key things here that I'll add, that I didn't add here, is that looking at opportunities to be able to do AdWords, for example, making sure that the credible, the reliable, the official information is at the top. So when you're doing those searches, that you're actually getting those results instead of getting other noise that might be detrimental to the count, but certainly might be misinformation as well. So that way, people are getting verifiable information, but it's also official information, or at the very least credible information. And then email and Facebook were the most frequently used, this sort of goes back to that point. This is the way that they're getting their information, right? How the respondents were getting their information. Surprisingly, or maybe less surprisingly, Twitter was the least frequently used. I think it's a very specific group of folks that are using Twitter, certainly. So definitely the least used out of all the sort of social media tools. And I can't stress this enough about the local context. This is something that is very, very, very important. One of the things that we found through our focus groups in Charlotte specifically was the county-wide data hack in discussing the census data security. And this was key because a lot of the conversation was really informed by the idea that this had just happened. It was still very present in their mind. They were thinking about the fact that all this information was hacked. How do we, how does the government ensure that their information is not going to be also hacked? Especially considering when you're adding a whole bunch of different layers. To the second bullet point, participants in all four focus groups discussing increased immigration enforcement and traffic stops or mining infractions that have made people fearful about interactions with law enforcement and government. And I think this is also going to be key, because these are all sort of layers that get added on to in terms of how difficult it's going to be to be able to ensure that we're normalizing it, but also easing a lot of these anxieties that do exist out there. Undercount of children, you know, in our survey, we did ask whether you would count your children. And this is really eye-opening, because among respondents with children aged four and younger in the home, 15% said they would not count them or do not know if they would. That is a pretty sizable number. And again, it's definitely speaks to the numbers that I shared earlier in terms of the undercount, right? And again, there needs to be a lot of work, and certainly there's a lot of organizations that are doing, like the testimony before me, and then other folks across the country that are really looking at this question. And certainly there's more research that's needed to assess these attitudes towards excluding children in the household, and what are the best messages to be able to really minimize, if not completely remove, a potential undercount of young children? And how do we do that? And that is it for me.
Thank you very much. Questions from the interview?
Thank you so much for this work, it's really helpful and interesting. And I've learned a lot from that Providence report. There's been a complete lack of transparency from the federal government, and that Providence report is one of the only ways that we really understand how people interact with census and tests. One thing that I learned from that report, my impression, was that, so it didn't seem like messaging was enough. It seemed like really the conditions that allowed people to respond, so Hispanic households to respond, involved a lot of kind of what you were talking about, that the connection with trusted sources, a reassurance, access to the paper form, which isn't going to be the first course. Have you, has your organization thought about the, how to get from the messaging to the operations stage? It seems to be the thing that I haven't heard anyone really talking about.
Right, I mean, you know, I briefly mentioned our national campaign. And certainly, one of the key things here is really that, right? How do we sort of transition from this sort of more theoretical sort of space into a more sort of practical space? And one of the things that we, at least from our perspective, is that, you know, we're really going to be employing similar strategies that we've done in our get out the vote efforts. And certainly our get out the count efforts in 2010 as well, and then even before that. One of the key things here is really looking at opportunities to be able to not only work very locally with partners, but also working with actual folks in the household, right? We know that the most trusted messengers are going to be family members. So how do we sort of get that message down to that household, or at least a family member, that will be able to really advocate for that household? And that's going to be really key. And the way we do that is really looking at opportunities on those trusted messengers, right? So at schools, and I think that was mentioned earlier, you know, early education programs, looking at places where we really can work with those institutions to be able to then provide this information. And I think hospitals are a perfect opportunity, right? Healthcare providers are a perfect opportunity considering the fact that they're also very trusted, and then being able to disseminate that information, and then being able to do that, I think is going to be highly important. Delivering those messages, again, we'll have to be reliant on that, but I don't feel like that would be the only reliant. I think we can still provide informational, information, for lack of a better way of framing that, at more broadly, right? So public radio or radio stations that might, that people engage with or listen to on their drive to work or whatever it may be. And providing that sort of acclimating messages, right? Getting those messages so people begin to feel a little bit more at ease the fact that there is a census coming, that it's only going to be a few questions that you'll need to be able to answer, and that it has to be completed for everybody in that household on April 1st. So again, I think those are all the different things that we really need to do. With regards to very specific things in terms of a campaign, certainly providing materials not only to partners, and one of the things we'll be doing and we have been doing, is creating toolkits to be able to transition over to more get out the count field effort. What are sort of the things that we've learned in terms of messages that can help other organizations that are working more closely with people on the ground, or in this case Latinos on the ground, the Latino community on the ground, and that are really engaging in this meaningful way to be able to then make sure that Latinos are really not only engaged, but also are going to hear those messages, and then again, are going to get themselves counted, right? And are going to get counted. But I'll add one more thing, is also providing different ways in which they can actually get counted, right? If they are going to be on their mobile phone, and they're not going to most likely do it online, some will, but not everybody. So what are the other mechanisms to be able to then provide those forms for people to actually help them out? Make it a little bit more convenient for them, right? Is it going to be in a library, is it going to be in the healthcare facility where they can just pick it up and fill it out? And then, you know, turn it in or whatever?
Yeah, actually, I was at a meeting yesterday, but one thing we learned is actually, there won't just be forms laying around that we can give to people, unfortunately. So it's a process, it's a sort of barrier, barrier process of helping them call the number or request the number.
Right, exactly. And that's the key thing, because I mean, I think at the end of the day, there are different ways that you can actually get counted, right? And I think identifying those and being able to make sure that you provide that information, that you can do it X, Y, and Z, I think that's going to be key, right? As you pointed out, you wouldn't necessarily be like, oh, here's all the forms, go ahead and fill it out, and then you can just give it back to us and we'll send it in. Again, it's just a matter of identifying those places where we can actually do that, right? And being able to, again, provide that information and say, this is how you can do it, right?
And so, and just your strategy and approach that you're recommending right now, this is all basically assumption that there will be a citizenship question on the form? Does it change at all, or is there anything that would change this approach or strategy?
Yeah, and I think that's a great question, mainly because there's a lot of uncertainty to you right now, right? It's not really set in stone in terms of whether there will be a question, and certainly we'll know a little bit more post-June. Our goal is to actually refresh our messaging, to be able to include some additional information, whether there's a question or not. For our purposes is really just about, you know, a couple of things. If there is a question that's included, then how is that going to affect the, or potentially affect the the way that we're going to message and which messages would be most effective to try to get everybody counted? That's the first thing. If there isn't a question there, there still needs to be a sort of a transition, right? Over to the actual work on the ground to be able to see if there's any nuance that we would be able to use to then be able to, you know, message it a little bit more nuanced than, you know, what we have now. My assumption right now, though, is that a lot of what we've already learned and some of the messages will be very consistent and will continue into a post-June sort of deadline. But again, I think that question will be highly important, and we need to understand it a little bit more in terms of what are those messages, once we know that it's definitely going to be there. We did include the citizenship question, obviously, in our research, so we do know at very least that people will have all these anxieties and all these different layers that we have to work with. So at the very least, we're ahead of that. And if it's not included, then it makes it a little bit different.
Do people understand that they don't have to answer that question? Or is it just a part of that, that they really have to answer every question and therefore the messaging, as you were said, may have to change based on inclusion or not?
That is a little tricky, though, because there isn't any guidance that, at least, Naleo Educational Fund has heard in terms of what, how the Census Bureau is going to treat those questions. We've heard many things, right? Not consistently. Everything from, oh, well, we use administrative records to be able to get this information, just a whole gamut of everything.
Just because of that, if you're fact, because now you're taking into different records?
Right, so until we get that guidance, you know, certainly I wouldn't be able to comment, but certainly until we get that guidance, we're not really sure, right? And certainly instructing not only organizations that we're collaborating with to be able to do X, Y, or Z, I think we would be, we would be misinforming at that vast, right? In terms of how to sort of handle that or how to message that. But again, until we get a little bit more guidance, then, you know, I think that's when we can actually say, yes, you know, you have to fill out the entire form. What happens if you don't? Well, this is what happens according to the Bureau, right?
Yeah, and to clarify, my understanding is although the interface, although the interface allows you to skip the question, it doesn't mean it's not required. It's still legally required to complete every question.
Exactly.
Thank you. I wondered, because you did so much work on the Latino communities, I wonder if you have any cultural insights as to whether families, Latino families are confused about who's supposed to fill out the census? So I don't know, I think there might be confusion in my house. I think I'm the head of household, and I think my husband might think he is.
I side with you, by the way.
But I wonder in the, in how to get your forms. I wonder in the households where you have, well, families, is there, and how can you speak to that?
Yeah, you know, we didn't specifically ask who the head of household was. In our focus groups, we did specifically try to get, at least in one of our focus groups, the head of household person. And specifically, the head of household, if you were a woman, for example, a Latina woman. And if you were, then you were invited to this focus group. And we did have a focus group that really delved into that. So a lot of the discussion and a lot of the research then is being informed by that, or at least one of those groups, in terms of how they're responding. What I would add about that though, is that it's going to be highly important to identify somebody in the household that can advocate for that household. And what I mean by that is that, you know, in reality, we really only need one person to count everybody, right?
It doesn't have to be the head of household.
It doesn't have to be head of household, anybody might be though. And I think that's the key thing, whether it is somebody that is head of household, whatever that may mean, and that could differ, which becomes a little bit harder, right? And it becomes a lot more complex in terms of how we're looking at that. But in the end, I think what I will say about that is that, you know, identifying those, you know, that person in that household that would be the most effective in being able to advocate and in this case, filling out the census form is going to be key. And at least from my, from my perspective is being able to refresh our messaging to get at that as well. You know, certainly we have some indication in terms of how that might work and how might that play out from our other research and certainly from our Get Out the Count research. Certain Latino women are really advocating, right? And really are taking the lead in doing that.
Yes.
So certainly, we're going to continue to rely on some of that research and some of those assumptions that we have. And again, being able to refresh that messaging as well, to be able to include that.
This is a great, great report. Thank you so much. This, the whole morning is great. I really, your trusted messenger piece is so critical and it's something that I've done work on in other areas, not with the census. But the one thing that really concerns me about this is the opportunity for people with bad intent to, you know, the worst-case scenario, set up a card table in the mall and say, "Fill out your census form here." You know, because there will be people that are fishing us, there'll be people who want to deny people their opportunity to be counted. And have you thought about how you designate, how do you determine or help people determine who the trusted people are? Because I think that's a really important question, particularly for immigrant communities.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's different ways you can do that. I think one key thing is really going to the actual community itself and really asking them essentially as to what are, who are the trusted messengers in their community. And certainly, schools would be a very sort of easy sort of place to go, simply because not only are they a trusted messenger, certainly from what we've heard in our research, but again, because we know that they can be a trusted messenger. I think healthcare providers too, and providing them accurate information in terms of not only what does it mean to actually fill out the census, how do you fill out the census, right? All of that is really important. So again, I think the key thing here is not necessarily really trying to identify people that might do something wrong, if you will, but more of identifying the folks that are really going to be advocates for the community. And again, we know a few, right? And we know that people have said that those are the trusted entities. But also going into the community, as I mentioned, right? And then really asking them to see who else we might have missed, right? I didn't mention face-based groups. Certainly that's key. And certainly in different communities, that's going to be key. So certainly exploring those opportunities as well, is there somebody in that community that can provide accurate information? And I think that's going to be really, especially in earlier part of even now, is really just giving general information. This is what the census is, is every 10 years, just really basic information to demystify it. And as you get closer, you're really changing your message to more of, this is what it's going to look like, this is how you're going to answer it. These are the opportunities for you to answer it in different ways and it's convenient and that sort of idea. If it's not going to be online, then what are my other options? Can I call a phone number to fill it out online, through the phone rather? Am I going to get something in the mail eventually, right? Am I going to be able to fill that out and then send it out in the mail? Those are all the things that you can just demystify, right?
You raised that the respondents said the most effective way to get them to respond was the paper form or even in person, which in some ways like a discordant thing since they're also worried about the government and law enforcement activities and other areas. We've talked, the Census Bureau has testified at many of our hearings and they're of course now hiring enumerators, in fancy words saying door knockers, might still be that, to go and collect information after the self-response rate, the self-response period happens. And I'm assuming in Latino communities, then there might, there's likely to be a high lack of self-response because of the issues you just raised. How can you or how can we ensure that Latino communities are partnering with the Census Bureau and the regional offices to hire people from the community so when they knock on the door, it's not a scary thing to those communities, but it's actually a trusted base from the community? How do we ensure that actually is happening in a way or is there something the state can do in order to make sure that that process is actually working in a way that will result in higher response rates?
Yeah, I mean, I think definitely the key is really hiring folks and I think somebody mentioned in the previous testimony in terms of somebody that looks like you, right? Somebody that you know or somebody in your community more specifically. So that's definitely key. Now, the challenge is that at least in the past, there have been waivers in terms of who can be hired, right? In terms of who can be hired as an numerator. Right now, it's only citizens and therefore, having a waiver that allows for a much more, a much larger pool of people that could potentially be hired to be enumerators can be key, right? I think that's something that as we get closer certainly to the count, you'll see a little bit more probably in terms of maybe a little bit more of a challenge to get somebody that's going to be culturally competent, whether it's language-specific, right? I think that's going to be key. So again, being able to expand that. I think that's one key thing. I think the other thing that I would add is making sure that, again, we're really tapping into all these different places that are going to be important in terms of the Latino community and where they engage, right? Healthcare already mentioned, schools already mentioned, those are all going to be highly important as well. So I think those are all different mechanisms that we can definitely use to be able to, again, make sure that folks are counted, but also that they're getting the information and they're being able to do that. One thing I will be, that I will add in terms of your question specifically around knocking on somebody's door, right? And this is something that we found in our 2017 research that we did, much broader voter engagement questions, but we were asking specifically also about the census really early on in 2017. And there, we heard a lot about not wanting anybody to come to their door and knocking on their door. There was just a lot of hesitation, not only from a more fraud perspective, right? Anybody can come and show me a badge that they're from the government, but I don't know, they're trying to like, you know, scam or something like that. From that to the fact that a lot of different local places might have a lot of raids, right? ICE raids that people are really concerned about. I shared a statistic or at least a, you know, some of the things that we were hearing from the focus groups. So certainly that gets added as that extra layer that people are really concerned getting somebody at that door. So being able to provide all those opportunities on the front end in terms of how you can fill this out. So again, in the end, if you don't fill it out, you're going to get somebody at your door. And maybe not as a scary tactic, right? To get people to fill out the census form before, but at the very least to have people sort of understand what that process is going to look like since it is very dramatically different than in 2010. So even if they filled it out in 2010, it's going to look different, right?
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we'd like to call up Shelley Callahan.
Thank you for inviting me to speak with you today. I just want to put this out there, we were audited by the State Department this week, so I put this together this morning. So if it's a little scattered, it's because it is.
You mean the federal State Department or the Secretary of State?
No, no, the federal State Department. They audited our programs and, you know, it was intense. They were with us for a couple of days. I will say, we got really high marks and they are so impressed with Utica. Is the mayor still here? They were, they couldn't say enough good things about how engaged Utica is with the refugee population. Yay. So I do want to say there's some data and some maps in here that come from Paul Hagstrom. He's a professor at Hamilton College. The programs at the refugee center, so we've been around since 1981. We've resettled over 16,500 refugees from about 40 different countries. I have a list of the programs up there that we currently have. And the ones in red are the ones that we anticipate are going to be doing lots of work in education and outreach around the census. And we have already started through our Office for New Americans program to have community conversations. I think some of the folks that I see here, they have participated in some of those. And we've been doing education in our ESL classes for refugees and immigrants. So, you know, all our programs sort of touch each other. I would also say that our immigration and citizenship program, you know, a lot of folks come there to adjust their status and we have pro bono attorneys that work there two times a month, seeing people with especially maybe complicated cases. And over the last two years, there's been a pretty large uptick in cases and concerns and people are really uneasy in many instances about their status or what they're hearing in the media with regard to being a refugee or an immigrant. Oh, you can't see this, sorry. So this is, it's our RAPs data and I just wanted to put this up there as an illustration. Our current caseload for this year is going to be about 200 people. It used to be 400 people and before that, 600 people. So the number of refugees entering the country is certainly down. I would say about half the refugee resettlement sites across the country have closed and so I think that's going to make it harder for folks to do outreach in many places and I think that needs to be thought about. And then Utica used to have a very healthy number of SIVs, refugees, but also people with special immigrant visas. And those were folks that for us had come from the Middle East, primarily Iraq, and they had helped our service members over there when we were involved in conflicts there. So we're no longer getting SIVs from Iraq because this administration doesn't allow folks to come here from there. And so again, when you're talking about levels of mistrust and fear, many of these populations that we serve are very fearful. So in our community conversations, the two things that came up for sure and in talking to our clients is the citizenship question and it's not just a fear of how to answer it. Some folks are so confused that they think if they're not a citizen, they shouldn't participate in the census. So for a lot of our folks, you know, they're starting from a very, very low understanding really of how government works and how systems work. They may have been in refugee camps for decades, they may be illiterate in their own language. So it's a, you know, there's a lot of teaching to go on and we've already started to engage in it. My agency did participate with census workers during the last census of about 10 years ago. We had folks in the field providing language support to folks that were going door-to-door. And I would say too, that refugees do not, for the most part, they're not really comfortable with online stuff and they can't even make a phone call if they don't speak English or, you know, another high incidence language like Spanish or Russian. So it's going to, I mean, that's a barrier. When you talk about, again, back to the citizenship question and our immigration and citizenship service, we do see folks that have DACA issues and that again, has lent to another level of distrust. You know, DACA, folks were promised one thing under one administration, the administration changed and, you know, they became pawns, some would say, to the current administration. So I, our organization, we really are struggling frankly, to deal with the mistrust issues. So I think messaging is going to be important, I think, and then making sure that people can actually participate in a way that works. And so when I say the survey may not be in your language, I didn't have time to put this in my PowerPoint, it was handed to me, I was going out the door this morning. But this year, so from January to now, we have provided interpretation in over 41 different languages and I just want to read some of them to you. So, you know, there was certainly Spanish and Russian and Arabic and Karen and Burmese, those are, that's a large community here. But we had hundreds of Kenyatta, Dinka, Cambodian, Urdu, Swahili, Malay, Maimai, so, and 40 different languages. So, you know, to make sure that folks can participate in this survey, you're going to have to have, I think, a lot of language and cultural support. And when you get into those communities that speak languages, you know, low-incidence languages, you really have to unpack what the questions are asking as well. And even the folks that do speak English well, might not be comfortable with forms. You know, forms are their own language. So one of the things that we have found in our employment department that, you know, helps hundreds of people get jobs each year, employers love online applications. Our folks do not love online applications. So we have done things like job fairs, where we have computers there, we have interpreters. I think the last job fair we did, we had 253 applicants, we had 11 different languages there and we had folks that could go right up to the computer with an interpreter that could help them with the form. So I wonder about census fairs and things like that where you really, but then when I hear that you have to, you know, maybe call and guess, you know, I don't know, I think that you really have to look at barriers and what people are able to do. So this goes, this diaspora thing goes to the question of trust and also how many folks are here? You know, 16,500 folks plus actually have come into Utica, but thousands more have joined us through secondary migration. And across the country, some sites get more secondary migration, others have out-migration numbers that exceed that. Utica happens to be a place where more come than leave. And they might, so those folks don't have to come to my center. I don't know what cultural orientation they had, I don't know what their language level is. We have made a concerted effort in the last five years to draw those people to our centers, to count them, to get case files, so I feel like we're doing a lot better. But a lot of those folks might be hard to find. And then just information across refugee populations especially, they are spread literally across our nation. But if something happens in Oregon, if the Karen community there, good, bad, otherwise, the Karen community here knows about five minutes later. So if a story breaks across the country, you know, something to do with immigration or ICE or an arrest or something, our folks know about it before we do. We also have what I kind of call the agency, like our own little refugee snopes, because a lot of times rumors and things happen. And so we really, if we hear things, we really try and help folks debunk the rumors, which can be interesting and sometimes daunting. So just be aware of that. I think outreach, you have to think outside the box maybe. So refugee centers, absolutely. Office for New Americans, places of worship are huge. And then things like soccer tournaments where you're going to see lots of ethnically diverse populations, ethnic celebrations, restaurants, markets, and social media. And, you know, anywhere else where you see people gathered, I would, you know, walk around, see where people are hanging out and what they're doing. And then the trusted source, absolutely. I can't really stress that enough. So we're having our World Refugee Celebration in June this year, June 22nd at Hannah Park, and we will have our Office for New Americans table there and we will have census information there. So we're doing everything we can. This is interesting and I just put this together because this- This is interesting, and I just put this together because this is, two years ago, we helped a professor from Hamilton do a survey. He wanted to survey refugee households. And so, we helped him decide where the largest concentration of refugee homes would be. And you can't see that too well either, but it's essentially from a little beyond Genesee Street, all the way over through Corn Hill and down to Bleecker Street into East Utica a little bit. So that was the houses literally visited, and we provided language services, and we trained folks from the community to knock on doors. So these were college students that were paired with folks from these communities to go out to the neighborhood and visited all those houses. Those were the refugee households that were identified. From this, from this program, they got over 620 surveys filled out, which is remarkable because it was really not funded very well, it was a non-governmental thing, and they, I mean, they're thrilled with that. But if you look at this, this is the refugee households visited, those are the surveys that were completed. And so when I talked to Paul about why the non-compliance, part of it was language. A lot of it was language. They didn't have the resources to send all the language groups out that they needed. So this survey was largely Bosnian, Korean, Burmese, Russian, and Arabic. And if someone's language is outside of that, it was hit or miss, depending on who was there. So, I think the language thing is so incredibly important, and in cities where you have large numbers of refugee households, it is going to be such a diverse language field. And there's going to be a whole lot of different cultural knowledge. And then I just, I like this, this, they put this together, so this shows the density of refugee households per square kilometer in that part of Utica. And so, again, I also think, talk to folks in the communities that know where people are. Don't, you know, don't try and, I mean, just use the resources that are on the ground and working with people already. And so, that's it. Thank you.
There's a really fascinating New York Times op-ed yesterday about people's experience online and how certain more vulnerable populations are much more a threat to things like, you know, data breaches and surveillance and all those types of things that other people take for granted. Is there, I mean, are some of the folks that you're serving, is there either a perception or a reality that they are surveilled by police, by government, by potentially bad actors? Is that a fear, is that a reality, is that, how does that play out?
I think that there is a level of unease currently that was not there a few years ago. And it's definitely, you can see different ethnicities maybe feel it more than others. You can talk to, you know, women who wear hijabs who say that it is just, they feel differently here now than they did a couple of years ago, that they might be verbally harassed, whereas before that never happened. And that sort of goes out into the community. And, yeah, I mean, yes, we have had ICE visit our offices, we have had FBI agents visit our offices, just, you know, the landscape has changed, and folks are definitely aware of that.
One thing I'll add, this is what we're trying to discuss, is then how do those people that truly are, it's not paranoia, I mean, there are-
It is not paranoia.
Yeah, there are people that are truly more vulnerable than others, so how do we help them experience things safe? One thing that we're thinking about is we direct them to places where there, we can guarantee that there is internet security, there is someone who's trained who can help guide, make sure that when they consent to complete the census, that they know what they're consenting to, they understand the risks, and that they feel like those risks have been mitigated. So maybe that's the alternative to having a stack of papers, which is the ideal, but maybe we can create spaces where, I think, I try and speak for libraries, so that makes sense there because we have IT infrastructure.
Yes.
But finding partnerships between community-based organizations and places where there is safe and secure IT infrastructure.
And we do citizenship classes at some libraries, so I think people feel welcome in libraries, for sure.
Thanks.
Well, before you go, I have a couple of questions. I think, first, your presentation is great, and I think what happens often in these discussions, everybody assumes the melting pot of our communities are often New York City-based, where there's multiple languages, but I think you've demonstrated really well, and I think this community has taken in a large swath of different communities from countries all over the world, and you've done it in a way that's warm and embracing and getting people to feel comfortable, and hopefully that can continue for this. So we applaud you for that, and this just raises that upstate has just as many of these issues as downstate does, and often, you know, that's a discussion. The one which I had you raise, the Korean language and Burmese, which is something we actually heard about in the Erie County in our Buffalo hearing just last week or the week before, some of these weeks bled together about where we're on this world tour here. Have, do you work with, and they raised translational services. We had several members of the community come and say, "We're new, we don't really understand what's going on generally, the government's new, and we just, basic functionality is difficult." Do you work with the Buffalo or the Western New York region, or the services there? How can we connect? You said 41 languages, I mean, we don't want to replicate the wheel every time, but how do you connect that all together? How can we help facilitate or make it easier for you to work with as many communities as you possibly can?
So we do collaborate. Utica is actually, and my agency is a major language hub, so I have professional interpreters and translators. And so we have worked with our partners across the state and across the country. A lot of refugee resettlement sites, if they get something produced and then translated into one of our niche languages, we share it whenever we can, because we don't want to waste resources. But, yeah, we all work together to a large extent. And because Utica is a language hub, we are often doing translations for folks across the state and across the country.
Great. Well, thank you so much for attending. We saw you having to do an audit, but we were glad you could attend. Thank you very much. Next, we'd like to call up Commissioner Roberta Reardon. Your presentation, we're saving all of our very difficult questions.
So I decided to come to the podium, so it wasn't like I was a commissioner sitting at the table just chatting, because this is a separate endeavor here. So we wanted to talk to you about what we are doing in-
I'd like to ask how many presentations there are by the way.
The last one.
A lot of this came just because we are a library.
So this is the final presentation, formal presentation that we opened up in public comment? I hear you. I can't solve hand read, but I'll try to move the media along.
So, this is a report on what we are doing at your DOL, and I'm very happy to say that we've actually been doing a tremendous amount of work on this very important issue. So the first, the, oh, I have, I have the thing there. So the first thing is, what is the agency footprint? We have 96 career centers in every region of the state and every major population center and many minor population centers, so we are completely across the state. And we impact every worker, that's more than nine million workers and businesses, over 550,000 workers, businesses in New York State. We have relationships and interactions with hundreds, literally hundreds, of regional advocacy groups on a weekly basis. We are a very outward-looking agency, particularly in the career center area, so they're open to the public. We have a lot of foot track traffic every day through the career centers, but we also work very closely with business organizations and advocates. Target populations that we can directly assist include, very important here, the immigrant and ESL communities, regions with limited broadband, and that's particularly in the southern tier and in the northern part of the state, and agricultural settings, because we work very closely with agricultural workers. So we are on farms across the state. Priority partners that we have to spread the word, we work very closely with labor unions, worker advocates, I've met many of you here in the room already, and of course, religious leaders, but we also work on the business side. People don't realize that the DOL has two sides to what we do. It's the worker component but also the people who employ them. So we work very, very closely with business groups and chambers of commerce, and that's an important part of what we do, and I think it's an important part of the outreach that we need to do for this. On the staff side, we have identified priority staff members. All of our members of regional outreach teams are being trained on census issues, and this is an extensive part of our staff. All of our call center staff are also being trained on these issues. Field staff, and that means not just the career center staff, which of course is a large number of people, but we have a lot of people who go out into the field and do audits and inspections and roundtables, and all of them are also being informed on how they can help with this issue. We also do periodic internal messages to all of the staff, reaffirming the importance of being counted and spreading the word in their own communities. I just want to point out that we have over 3,000 employees in the DOL across the state. It is a very diverse workforce, and we make sure that they know what the census is and that they can go back to their own communities and have conversations about why it's important for their friends and family to cooperate with the census. So the career centers are going to be very important in this. The New York State Career Centers, as I said, we see over half a million customers each year. We have resource rooms in the centers, this means we have computers in all of the 96 centers, some are larger than others, but we are using these resource rooms as census rooms. So they will be available for people to come to the trusted place issue. This is definitely a place where people can come in, use our computers, and enter their census information. We have monitors in most of the, not all, but most of the waiting rooms for the career centers, and we put up reminder messages and ads, and that's on a loop, so it goes through the day, reminding people that this is going on, and we're going to do it in different languages, so it's not just in English, and we can do it depending on what the language needs are in that area. Of course, we have display posters and handouts, again, these will be in multiple languages, and we have discussions with job seekers in multiple languages, and we can tell them when they come in for their career counseling sessions why this is an important thing for them and their family. Next, very important issue of interpretation. So we have phone interpreters available to supplement in-person bilingual staff. We do have bilingual staff in many of the, not all, but many of the career centers and most of our offices, I know, in Albany and New York City, we make a point of having bilingual staff. Many of our field workers, inspectors are from different nationalities, so we have a lot of variety of languages, but we also have phone interpretation. These services, this is critical, these services are available in over 200 languages. It is a mandate from the state that we communicate with our customers in a language that they can understand. So we do have this service available. The process begins with, if you're in person in the office, we have a sign, we have a poster, and they can point to the language that is best for them. So we don't have to, they don't have to speak in English and say, "My language is Korean." We have staff members who will call the service and identify the language, and then the interpreter joins. If we don't have somebody in the center who's able to do an adequate interpretation, then we'll use the phone service. Sometimes this happens immediately, sometimes there's a lag, because of course, it depends on how busy the interpreters are on the phone line, so there may be, you know, a wait, but it's usually minutes, not half hours. But we want to make sure that we can connect people with their language. The interpreters are trained in both linguistic and cultural competency, and they are very closely trained on confidentiality, because of course, if they're in our office on unemployment insurance issues, that, we have very high levels of confidentiality around that information, so they're all very trained in what they have to do and what is expected of them. Large events, I love the idea of a census fair, what a wonderful idea. We do a ton of outside events at the DOL. We do information and census booth at every major DOL event, so of course, the New York State Fair is in August, you're going to have a very robust presentation there for the entire length of the fair. And we do large job fairs year-round. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's, we have over 1,000 job fairs. And the one we just recently did in Buffalo last week, they had, I think, 191 businesses there, we had over 1,000 people participating, so there's a real opportunity to continually reach out to people in their daily lives and remind them how important this is. Promotional materials distributed to participating businesses, this is a piece that I think we often forget about. People work in businesses, and so those businesses are going to be important hubs of information, and they need to understand, you know, how they can assist their employees as well as their customers. You know, if you have a bodega in the Bronx, it would be very helpful to work with that bodega owner so that they can dispense the information to their people who come in and out every day, and they'll be in their languages. County fairs, every county has a fair. We want to make sure that every county fair has a table to talk about the census in multiple languages. Obviously, immigrant outreach events, and the commissioner, myself, and agency leaders, I do a tremendous amount of public speaking, and this is on the rotation for all of my speeches now to have a spot, regardless of what the content of the speech is, to talk about how important the census is, because we're going to reiterate that message until people get tired of seeing me, which may be any day soon. Social media, so social media is a really important and interesting part of this messaging, as you've heard already. On our website, we are having banner messages in highly-traffic DOL pages, the UI pages, the job search pages, all of those, those already have banners, and they will change a little bit as we go along to make sure that it keeps people engaged, they don't keep seeing the same one. Facebook, we have Facebook pages, we are a trusted place to go get information, so we are going to have a lot of information on Facebook. Twitter, we tweet a lot, where in the world this Commissioner Reardon has been going on, and so we will have a census piece about that as well. Instagram, we do a ton of Instagram, again, we can, the great thing about Instagram is you can take pictures of the various communities that you're working with, so people can see themselves reflected in the communication. YouTube, we do a lot of YouTube videos, we're going to do more, again, we can do them in multiple languages, so there's a lot of outreach, and we think of ourselves as a trusted partner. Now, I know that for some people, going into a government office is not a comfortable experience, but a lot of people do engage, I know that various communities understand, "We are a resource for you." And I want to point out, the Department of Labor does not ask people's status when they work with customers who come in, regardless of what they're doing, because it's not our job. We don't enforce federal immigration laws, why would we ask? We couldn't do anything with it. So it is important for people to make known to other people, we are, if you come into a career center and ask questions about the census, we will never ask you your status. That's, it just, it will never happen. If you call up and complain that your wages have been stolen, we will never ask your status, because you, if your wages have been stolen, somebody has broken a New York State law, and that has nothing to do with your citizenship status. So that is an important thing for people to understand. We have engaging text graphics and animations and videos, we have a great communication staff, we can't wait to do more of this. We post in, again, in multiple languages, and I think the important thing is, when we, when we translate a flyer or a poster or whatever into other languages, we need to hold on to that and make sure that we can disperse it across the state to various community groups that need it. So it would be helpful if the community groups let us know, "We need, we need things in Bengali," because we do things in Bengali, so we need to know where you are, so we can make sure you can get it. And we encourage viral sharing, you know, if we upload something and it's interesting to you, it might be interesting to your friends as well, so please share. Earned media, so earned media is an important part of this, we do op-eds in the major newspapers. We have a lot of press advisories that go out ahead of major events. We sometimes wonder if people read our press advisories, but we send them out on a regular basis. And we pitch individual staff activities and encourage a complete count to regional press outlets, so it is, again, in the rotation as part of our ongoing message every time we talk to people. Additional marketing, regional presentations with partner organizations. So if, if you called from the Utica Refugee Center and said, "We want to do a presentation," we'd be happy to come out and work with you and do a presentation. We are available, I just, I can't stress that enough. I, I do a tremendous amount of public outreach, I love doing it, and we have a staff that loves doing it. So take advantage of us, we're here and we're happy to partner with people. Recorded messages and appropriate messages in languages on the call center phone for the recorded readings, while you're waiting, you can hear, you know, the updated messages about the census. And we are offering to our DOL staff a template "Get Counted" message for their mail signature, so when they send out email, at the bottom it says "Get Counted," so everybody can join in on that. Current jobs, so, this is a, this is an interesting conversation, because of course, this changes over time. As we get closer to the actual count, there will be different jobs available. Right now, we are hiring for 800-plus jobs, there are 26 wide-ranging positions, and I mean wide-ranging, it goes everywhere from an hourly rate of $13.50 It goes everywhere from an hourly rate of $13.50 to an hourly rate of $29. So you can imagine how diverse the jobs are. The salaries go from $47,000 to $149,000. So you see here in the regions how many job openings are available. And again, some of this will change as we get closer to the actual tally. So accomplishments to date. We are tracking available jobs. We're posting all the job openings in Jobs Express. We're matching job orders, promoting jobs to customers in the career centers, and inviting customers to regional hiring events. I want to stress to people who don't know about us, everything we do in a career center is free of charge. There is never a fee for coming in. There is never a fee for posting your job on our, in our jobs bank, and this is an important piece of this. So we are tracking all of this, and it's available to everyone. We have new employee and training sessions for census workers that we hold at DOL offices. We are promoting jobs at many job fairs, many, not many, luck, both. Large regional career fairs, customized recruitment events, nearly 100 to date. And we are supporting recruitment needs of partners and community-based organizations. So people come to us, "We need these workers, and we can help you find them." And again, you can see on the right-hand side the number of events that we've done recently. And again, this will change as, as we grow. I just want to stress a couple of things. We are here in, across the state, in cities, towns, and hamlets. We have people who speak multiple languages themselves, and if we do not speak those languages, we will get on the phone with an interpreter. Over 200 languages available. We print a ton of material. Let us know what language you need in your community, and if we've done it already, we'll get it to you. We have all of this public-facing opportunity for us to get the word out. We want to work with community groups. And we have staff available, including myself, to come out and do a presentation because we understand how critical this is to the health and vitality of the citizens of the state of New York. So with that, we are your DOL.
For the record, I never tire of seeing you.
Back at you.
My question was about the computers that you mentioned would be available. I assume that's so that people can fill out the census if they want to. And I just wonder about, you know, who those computers belong to? Are they government computers? Is ITSM on?
It's a great question. They are in our resource rooms. In fact, if you go down the hall to our career center, you can actually see what it looks like. And they are government computers, and I assume we're on IDS. Yes? So they are very, very secure. That is an important thing for people to understand, that if they come into the career center, these are extremely secure computers because we use it for everything.
Maybe to follow with the secretary's question, we just started doing some analysis by region. We did the RDC region, and we took the top 20 hardest account communities based on response rates from 2010. And a lot of the special come using libraries as a part of, it's been important, it's a part of their source in communities. But what we're finding is when you cross-reference a hardest account census tract in a community with high rates of no internet access, all right, so this is the toughest of the Dutch communities, they don't have libraries in their communities in many cases. Some do, so I'd say three-quarters don't. I think you almost need an unprecedented mapping in relation to saying, if you have a library option, a career center option, and of course, in many of these cases, they're in a SUNY or CUNY community, like opening those doors up too with their computer labs. We almost need to like, really high broad-scale look at them all together because we're going to need resources, but at the same time, you almost need a, I think, an unprecedented mobilization effort. We haven't seen in a long time. So that might be one way they can go all together to...
And that, and that would be relatively easy to do. I've also been talking to...
CUNY's map, Steve from, sorry, Steve did do that mapping, and it found the hardest account populations. 99% of those populations are within a mile of the library in New York.
Yeah.
So that's been done.
So that's an important thing to do.
New York City is different than, I bet you, if you go to some...
Oh, you go to Batavia or...
Upstate, all of New York, it was 99%. New York City's 100%.
Okay. So, you know, we can certainly provide that. But Commissioner Leah from State Ed is also thinking about ways to use BOSIs.
Right.
Which are across the state and are very trusted, and it's a place that often work with, with particular groups of people. So, you know, she's, she's going to get, get us an official response on this, but that's a way to, to kind of go deeper into the trusted places that people live and work in. But I think the idea of saying, "You have this option, you have this option, you have this option," is really important.
And then how, somehow, we have to figure out how to connect then the different pieces. So you could offer, or, you know, we just had Shelley on translation services. You, it may not be a DOL offering, it could be Shelley's organization, the refugee organization working with ONA, working with the library, right? This sort of all make it work. So the library's in the Mohawk Valley to provide the internet service because that's where the capacity is. But then the translation services somehow all get connected together. But I haven't really figured out in our heads how to make that all kind of talk to one another.
You could almost, back to Shelley's idea of a census fair.
Right.
So you could have census evening at the library and the DOL career center. And you could say, "On next Tuesday, we are going to have a census completing party, and we will have these language interpreters available." And, and you could, you know, you could do it like a fair. I love that idea. They're going to have to have, you know, I don't know what the identifiers are that you need to get into the internet to do your form, but, you know, there are ways to do that. And I, I think that we've worked a lot with Shelley and with Refugee Center. Their, their resources are remarkable, but we need to make sure that we know where those communities are and what languages they speak.
Maybe we can ask this, but we have Commissioner, the State Education Department Commissioner, ask her to either provide testimony or come speak at one of our hearings. It ties back into the children, the young children, but I think it doesn't matter that. Where, maybe we use our community schools model with state town maps where all of our community schools are. They're very clear what a community school is, but at least you know that's really where the hard account areas are, and using those community schools as a resource to have, when the parents come in to pick up their kids, offer up a computer lab. But they're going to need services there too, I think, from library partners, from DOL people, from the DOL commissioner members, and even some of our nonprofit organizations provide the other services along with that. So somehow making that connectivity work too, I think is important.
Yeah. And I, and I think it occurred to me, and we were talking earlier about children, and we sort of touched on it, but working with daycare providers is really critical. Because, boy, if there's a trusted person in a community, it's the person you leave your children with.
Any other questions? The executive director has stepped up.
Oh my gosh, she's at the table.
Yeah, I, I, thank you for this presentation. It's really interesting to learn about some of that scaffolding that you can provide. So there's 96 locations. There's 1,300 public library locations across the state. So thinking about ways that we can coordinate, use, use that scaffolding to build out cross-regions that we can really get in deep. Yeah, have you, have you thought about, are there models of that kind of partnership already? Or again, how to operationalize this?
You know, we've done a lot of partnering, partnering on a lot of different initiatives. I don't think it would be too difficult.
Two things. Thank you for doing this. First of all, I just want to point out what you've said and draw a comparison. The Census Bureau has previously told us that their setup to do 50,000 minorities. We knew that was not enough. But New York State, you've just heard, is set up to do 200 minorities very easily and very quickly through a centralized system. And I just want to draw the attention to the Census Bureau that we can do it. They probably couldn't. The, the other, just clarification, when you had the slides up about the jobs that you were promoting and...
The 800-plus.
Yeah, and those are all Census Bureau jobs.
Yes.
Isn't that true?
Yes.
So there are many other jobs that the Department of Labor...
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Rich.
So these are just Census Bureau jobs across the country?
Yes.
I'm sorry, across the state?
Across the state, yes. And I should say that I was told this morning, we had a meeting with USDOL yesterday, I think, and they, they were looking at what we've been doing and our progress, and they were gobsmacked at how much work we've done and how deeply we dug into it, and, and it's a year away.
So 32 jobs in the Mohawk Valley are census jobs. That's what the Federal Census Bureau has determined is the number of positions needed to, to the count here.
And it goes from managers all the way down. I don't know, does that include the enumerators?
They're, they're active jobs right now.
Active, yes. So the enumerators are not in there yet.
So the enumerators will be added to that.
Right.
I think the good piece of then connecting groups like Dorian's group to make sure that if we're going to do door-to-door in the right way, we have the reflective communities present as numerator. So I think that's important.
Yeah, that's a really important part of it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The first person, and then the person behind him, so we can move it along more quickly. And we have a bunch of them, so bear with me. If I say your name incorrectly, please, for the record, when you get up in my tone, say your name, so we have a quick deal. First, we'll call up Jeanne Curry, and then it'll be followed by Diane Berry.
Jim, before you get started, Diane Berry has to leave, so...
Okay.
So that's first.
After Diane Berry, there will be Lisa Matt.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jeanne Curry, and I'm trustee of the Edith B. Ford Memorial Library in Over New York. The Ford Library is in Seneca County and serves the residents of three towns with a population as of 2010, we hope it won't go up, of 8,484. There are two school districts. It's very rural with a very limited number of public services such as healthcare facilities, grocery stores, or even gas stations. Internet access is poor with very little available broadband. And 2013, 21% of the county had no or only dial-up access, and it really hasn't improved much since 2013. The area has a high poverty level, but with some areas of relative wealth along two lake shores, we're in the banks. Agriculture, including wineries and niche fruits and vegetables, is the main industry, although there aren't very many small mom-and-pop businesses scattered throughout the area. And there is a large and growing population of Amish, which I'll get to later. Ford Library is a major community center, and with a wonderful, with the wonderful support of the community, is open 50 hours a week. In the last year, the library has gone through a major expansion project, and with a lot of hard fundraising work, has been able to double the size of the building, add more public spaces, provide over 20 public access computers, and now it does have improved broadband and Wi-Fi access. So as a result, Ford Library is going to be a key community support for the census next year, and here is why. We're a well-trusted global organization able to educate patrons about the census, what it is, why it matters, what to do. And I love those words, that it is safe, easy, and important. We're using those. We have the staff and the infrastructure to allow patrons to complete the census online at the library. And we are a trusted place for those without computers or internet access, such as the Amish. And the Amish do use the library. We have a history and culture of digital security and online privacy. Patrons are assured that no one but them will see or know what they have done. We have a terrific relationship with the kids in our area. We can work with them to encourage their families to complete the census, whether at the library or at home. And we also have excellent relationships with other local organizations, such as the two school districts, the fire department, a local community organization, and local governments. And we've all worked together to, to help get the census completed. So all libraries, including mine, are ready to help New York State to get as complete a census count as possible, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lisa, and then after Lisa will be Buckwray Dow.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Matt, and I speak to you in my capacity as Director of Jervis Public Library in Rome. One of our library's concerns is the online nature of the 2020 census. As reported in December by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance, Jervis Public Library is in a census tract in which at least 40% of the residents lack home internet access, and we're in the center of the city. With constant use of the library's Wi-Fi service, 30 secure public access computers with internet, and a waiting list for the borrowable Wi-Fi hotspots, we can anecdotally verify that data. And as seen by the attendance at the weekly drop-in tech help sessions, even those who do have internet access regularly require assistance in using it, and attendees do include members of the Amish community. We are the internet access provider for a large portion of our community's population, many of whom are traditionally underrepresented. And we are that because we are open about 60 hours a week, including evenings and weekends. We're free. There's no demographic requirement to enter, and we have tremendous experience providing access to government services to about 800 people every day through the door in just one library. We're also bound by New York State confidentiality law, and we have a high profile on Facebook. The fact that broadband is expanding isn't the issue for the census tract in which we are located. Many residents there face socioeconomic factors such as poverty and their transient nature. They either can't afford broadband, which is available in the tract, or they aren't in one residence long enough to make installing or uninstalling a task worth their time. With the census shifting to online reporting, it's those who are already disadvantaged who will be further underrepresented. We also serve those who are in rural areas and don't have access because there is no service. To them, we provide those wireless cellular hotspots, so they can access the internet two weeks at a time when there's one available for them to use, which is still no substitute for stable access. And an expected expansion of broadband in 2021 in the rural areas will be too late for the census. Public libraries are in a position to advocate for its patrons and the communities in which they live by bridging, bridging that digital divide, whether created by poverty, availability, or education. In the case of the census, full participation has tangible economic implications. And public libraries are trusted messengers embedded in their communities and stand willing to be part of the solution. So everyone is captured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buckwray Dow is not here. He's the Chair of the Utica Koran Community, the 8,000 Koran that are here. And so he apologized that he did have to leave.
Okay, thank you. Chris Segas, and then Matthew Carey.
Thank you. My name is Chris Segas. I am the Director of Utica Public Library. Lisa has already done a great job talking about the similar demographic issues that the city of Utica faces and the myriad ways that the library in that community addresses access issues. So I won't belabor that point. I also think that there's no finer advocate for library interests in New York State than Lauren Moore, who is on your commission. She also can speak much better than I can. One thing I would submit to you in searching for solutions and ways to make this work, we are part, at the library, of what's called the Mohawk Valley Asset Building Coalition. It includes people like the Resource Center for Independent Living, the Mohawk Valley Resource Center for Refugees, the United Way, a number of other Mohawk Valley Community Action Agency. Within New York State's communities presently, there exist networks that have helped hard account communities, low-income communities, communities without access to what the census is going to need to provide access for. These organizations and communities exist, and they have successfully helped these people navigate what is seemingly an unnavigable federal apparatus. So look to the communities that have these organizations that are doing the work now so you don't have to recreate networks that are already robust and functioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Carey, followed by Daniel Hay.
Hi, my name is Matt Corey from the North Country Library System in way upstate New York. The, the North Country Library System covers 65 libraries, and they're all very, very rural, really, really small communities. Each library has internet access, it has public computers, and in each of these communities, you know, they serve very underserved populations. And their only way to do the census online is through the public library. So shout out to public libraries, and thanks for your time.
If you don't know either, one, I have one question for you. Sorry. Co-chairs, privilege. What service provider do you use in the North Country for your library system for broadband?
So we actually have a really interesting setup. Of our 65 libraries, 41 of them just got onto a fiber connection that we host at the system. So of our tiny, tiny rural libraries, they get 100 down and 100 up for speed.
Was that part of the state program, or was that just something else?
That was something that we set up, but there was a little bit of funding on the side that we arranged.
side that we arranged.
Yeah, you said a hundred, and the state's program, the five-hundred million, was a hundred mags at least as the baseline. So you have now all wired on the fiber, hundred up.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me to ask you a question.
Oh, sure.
All right, Daniel, and then Wanda. Alvaro, Alvaro. Daniel?
My name is Wanda Brunches. I'm the Executive Director of the Mid-York Library System. Mid-York serves a population of over three hundred and seventy thousand through forty-three public libraries, many of which are located in small or rural communities, often serving as the sole resource for access to broadband services and fulfilling information requests. Libraries provide outreach services to the same population as those identified as being historically undercounted: people who are educationally or economically disadvantaged, geographically isolated, seniors, and those for which English is not their primary language. It is crucial that every New Yorker is counted in order to strengthen our political representation in Washington and ensure our fair share of federal funds for essential programs. To achieve this goal, libraries across New York State have collaborated with elected officials, agencies, and nonprofits who work directly with hard-to-count communities. For the first time, the census will be conducted digitally, which creates challenges in access, digital literacy skills, and trust in government that may undermine its accuracy. Since we do not have a local census office, the residents of Herkimer, Madison, and Oneida County are at an even more significant disadvantage. This makes our local libraries a critical resource positioned to address some of the biggest obstacles identified in achieving a complete census count. Currently, our member libraries have nearly four hundred computers used to provide broadband access to the public. Our libraries reported over four hundred thousand computer and Wi-Fi sessions during a one-year period. This is important since over twenty percent of New York households do not have an internet subscription and will rely on public access to complete their census survey. More than sixty percent of adults over the age of fifty need help in setting up or using a new electronic device. Every day, library staff assist individuals in learning basic technology skills and in achieving greater digital literacy proficiency. Libraries have always stood by their commitment to the right to privacy, intellectual freedom, equal opportunity, and the public good. This commitment has made public libraries the most trusted resource for information, more trusted than Friends, local news organizations, and more trusted than government sources. When it comes to something as critical to our future as the census, our communities will trust and rely on their local libraries. Libraries have an innate understanding of the importance of digital equity and are trusted organizations for many. In the words of my colleague, Terry Kirchner, "An investment in libraries today will result in a more financially secure New York State that can better support the quality of life, needs, and democratic rights of all of its residents over the next ten years." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alex Kodesh? Sonia Martinez? Sonia's not here. I thought she was. Sonia has reappeared. She's sitting next to me. She wasn't personal to you that she moved to your chair, right or right?
I'm gonna be very brief. My name is Sonia Martinez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Mohawk Valley Latino Association. And I'm just here to give support from the agency and with our community. We're not new, but new. I say that because we've been in the community for fifteen years. Myself, along with Mr. Cologne here, started the organization, the agency, fifteen years ago. And we're still here, and we're still giving support to the Latino community. So whatever you want us to do, we will do to get our Latino community take charge and participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Armando Casas? Casas? You wanna speak?
Well, I'm taking my first participation here, and I come from Mohawk Valley, Hispanic Association. And what I heard all about how you are trimming the situation about the census and how the support about the libraries and all the system. I got some small experience in my country when I'm working for the Ministry of Education there. Technically, when I was very young, I do the census by myself, door by door, so I know how the system is working. It's very interesting what I saw there here. Well, I'm maybe coming too late for the airport, so I'm a little bit tired about it, but the only personal comments I can say is very interesting. Firstly, how you folk, how you try to do this? I guess you got a challenge every year about the system. It's a little bit complicated about the different kind of countries and oceans. It's very hard apart. So, well, the association, I have a member now, I guess we are plenty support about it. And all what we needed, exchange of our knowledge or something, I agree. I'm happy to help if anything's needed.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have on our list of folks who signed up. If anybody else wishes to, now is your time.
I did sign up.
Okay, why don't you come up, please? I don't have your name, so if you could just say it for the record, that would be great.
I melted along from Prospect Library. First thing I'd like to remind the people who did speak in the presentations that the census on an individual basis is inviolate for seventy-two years. They can't find out anything about you. I do this because I've been to two census, two censuses. A lot of what I would have said, somebody's already said, one of the things I was surprised about is to find out about our enormous resources. Where are they? But that's that. I'm really concerned about the privacy issues that I hear discussed here. Mostly, I'm concerned because we are a small association library, and most of the libraries around us are, which means we're run by volunteers, which means we do twenty-two hours a week, and it's a good number for us. We're right on the blue line, almost, so people are going to be coming down when the census comes. They do now, because we're the computer, and we have one. It's out in the open, and I'm really concerned about our privacy problems. I'm concerned about when you're going to do this. I would suggest that having done these overview presentations, it's time to look and see what the libraries need to know and who's going to train them. Now, I expect we'll have volunteers who won't want to participate, frankly. And the other thing I would like to ask, and no one has, who's going to pay for it? And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner, I, I did indicate that I may have a few words, and it's still time. Please. Thank you.
Buenas dias. Good morning. Buenos dias. My name is Tony Cologne. I am certainly, first of all, want to thank Commissioners for being here, the Secretary Omielente, and certainly Commissioner Destido, who I don't think is here now as well as Mayor Promerio. I'm Tony Cologne, President of Solutions by Technologic, which is a legal and medical Spanish-language interpreter. That's what I do. That's my, my profession. I also serve and volunteer on the Oneida County Vision 2020 Initiative. I'm the first Latino voted and appointed to the, and now Vice Chair of the Mohawk Valley Community College Board. I am the Chair of the City of Utica Planning Board and City of Utica Access and Inclusion Committee, and co-founder, as Sonia mentioned a moment ago, of the Latino Association. History recommendations I quickly want to present to the census project to consider. From personal experiences in serving the community as a professional interpreter and community advocate for the limited English proficient, I'm not just talking of the Latino community, though. In fact, one of the reasons we formed the Latino Association was to make sure that not only our issues were addressed, but the issues of many others of our community of limited English and limited means were also represented. Self-reporting within the Latino, Hispanic, and in general, the limited English community will be a challenge due to limited internet access. My suggestion, as has been addressed here, I like the idea of a census fair. One of the things that organizations that is not here, but I also believe would be a big part of this in our community, would be the Municipal Housing Agency. They certainly have tremendous outreach into their captive audience, and they do tremendous work with the Latino Association and many other agencies. And it's a great organization to, and I'm sure that there's similar type opportunities around the state. The other thing to keep in mind, it's not just those that are being counted that's important from a cultural perspective and, and training, but it's also the organization itself needs to understand and the workers, those that are involved, the differences in our community, even the Spanish-speaking community, and all the differences there are amongst those that speak Spanish. We're not all the same just because we speak the same language. And lastly, I believe that when we go out into the community to count, and certainly whether it's self-reporting or the fact that we have these fairs or other locations, that we have individuals that are interpreters, not only in language, but also culture. I think that's, that's really critical, and certainly, I'm assuming that the plan includes, your plan includes TV, radio, and social media outreach in multiple languages. I think that's very critical, as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You were closing us out.
Okay.
No pressure.
Thank you. I am Dr. Gloria Casas. I am from Peru, and currently the Executive Board President of Mohawk Valley Latino Association. We are here with part of our Executive Board, and there are here, for example, Saida Morrell. She is a member at large with Kevin Mark, that you know her here. My brother is a new member, the engineer Gerald Casas, that was talking first. And we are very, very grateful to be here because we can pick up important statistic information, definitely. My concern in two points, as a doctor and also as a president of this community, is about the very important analysis that you did about the forty-three percent of the kids are in risk. And also, I will appreciate if you can focus in the school district here, because they are not very real committed with the Latino kids. I have a lot of experience. The Executive Director, Sonia Martinez, was working a long time ago in the school district. Unfortunately, I am a positive people, and I will appreciate if you can motivate them to be here, because nobody is for the school district, and I am very surprised. And also, we are very available to help and work on team with you in any point that you would like to develop here, to try to create here. And also, we were talking about with Sonia about the important statistic analysis to start to create a focus group with all the important institutions here that there are, that are in care of kids, right? To try to motivate to the importance to be honored to share the information, open the doors, and the important support definitely for the barrier of the, of the English, the barrier of the language, is to try to have the support of the Spanish interpreters. We have a successful companies here, working as, with this support in the different activities, more principal activities as the medical offices and the medical appointments, right? And also, my son is an Spanish interpreter too, and I call him sometimes too. And this is the idea, to try to work on team. We are in a wonderful nation, and we are very proud to be part of this nation. And the idea is to, to work on team. Thank you for this invitation.
Thank you. That is the perfect way to close our session. Thank you very much for coming on behalf of the commission. This was a great session, and we got a lot of great presentations, and we appreciate that. This will be posted on the website if you want to watch it again. If you have additional testimony, please submit it. We have an online website. We'll post everything. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, May first, at six p.m. We're gonna be at the Queensborough Hall, so we're going to Queens. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend.